You're listening to Mr. Allard's Neighborhood, small town feel with big time ideas. After all, you are entitled to Brad's opinion. Here's your host, Brad Allard.
Well, we had a little curveball thrown in today. My guest today was going to be Debbie Beaman of Promises, but she's a little under the weather, so she needs some good thoughts and prayers. She's been feeling poorly for a little while now. And speaking of good thoughts and prayers, all the food pantries can be, that could be asked of. The food pantries are hurting, guys, and we've talked to them about this before, but regardless of what you're reading in the papers, the economy is tough and their demand is higher and some of their supply sources have been cut for various reasons, including some of the government actions. And so just bear that in mind, the three major food pantries in this area, House of Hope here in Crowley, the Harvest House, and Promises Community, y'all could use your help. But so with this available time, I thought I'd take a look at what's going on down in Austin in that special session. And there's a whole bunch of stuff going on, and I'll explain some of the details of it, including the very, very confusing redistricting objective. And that's going to be confusing because, you know, when I teach this particular topic in my government class, it is the most confusing thing for the students. And at the end of the discussion about it, they're like, what did you just tell me? I mean, and I don't blame them because it's very, very confusing and a lot of contradictions in law and court rulings and interpretations and whatever else. But anyway, let's talk about our friends and sponsors to make all this fun possible. Our place, of course, they're always open. They got some new Mexican-based food items, so this could be a lot of fun for that. It's a great place to go. I'll be there Thursday with my guys and, you know, we'll probably talk mostly football because getting that time of year, I know Joshua there is an avid college football fan, aren't you?
Not in the slightest.
Not in the slightest. Okay, fine.
Sadly.
Well, that's the good thing about America. We allow people like you to stay. College football, you don't like college football?
I'm not, I'm not a fanatic of it. I will say, my older sister went to TCU, so I did grow up going to some of their games, and that's...
You're not helping yourself here.
I know.
All right. All right, anyway.
If it helps, my older brother went to Baylor, too, so it's fine.
Oh, okay, there you go. Okay, you're redeemed. So, all right. Now, also, last night was really interesting night. We went to our place, not our place, I'm sorry, Gina's, good grief, right. Gina's was Otto's 50th birthday, and I went there last night, and I missed him because he was late to his own birthday party, but I went there and had some pizza and whatnot. And tell you, Suzie and the sissy, Suzie Morgan and the band, really were bringing it last night. It was really good stuff. Her husband, Woodrow, can really play. And it was, it was a lot of fun. It was a packed house, or people waiting. I've been in Gina's before where it's been full like that, but this, it was just a lot of energy in the crowd with the music going on and everything. And so it was, it was a great time. We had, you know, a full band, we had a lot of people, a lot of, if you want to call them celebrities, I guess, Burleson celebrities, but we had a lot of people there, and it was a great time. So Gina's Pizza is always great. And so thank you, Otto, for a really good time and happy birthday, and thank you for what you do for our community. Also, thank you to John Williams over at O Pro Roofing, 817-734-2756. It's time to get your roof inspected, guys. You don't want to wait too late because later you wait, the more risk you're taking. So you don't want to do that. And so it's, it's a lot of, a lot of hassle getting a new roof. That's the word I'm looking for. All right, it's a lot of hassle getting a new roof. And he'll help you through that hassle. And if you don't need a new roof, he'll tell you. He'll tell you yes, no, or whatever. So don't, don't put it off because you don't want to wait until winter time or something like that, when then you've got a real problem on your hands. Okay? Also, thank you to Jeff Kelly at Jeff Kelly Realtors with the Wethington Agency. You can get him at 817-781-0546, or jeff@jeffkellyrealty.com. There's a lot going on in Johnson County. He sells all of it. And he also has a page on Facebook for Johnson County Realty. So you need to, if you're looking to move here, you need to look at that because there's going to be homes that are going to be shown and, and, you know, not just the photos, but also, you know, timed for tours and things like that. And Jeff can help you with all of these things. And he's a really, really, really nice guy. I mean, and it's important because you're going to be spending time with your Realtor. You want to be able to stay in their company. So it's a really good time. Also, thank you to Tiffany, Tiffany Jane. It's going to be coming up pretty soon, Monday, not Monday, good grief, I'm gonna say Friday is the first. So you'll have your issue, 30,000 will be going out, and they'll have the issue out either the first or the second of this month. And I believe it's going to be on banking services and financial services and the like. And it's just going to be another great issue. I mean, it goes, it goes to a lot of different people, and it goes to a lot of businesses as well because they have extra copies and whatnot for everybody to peruse while you're waiting for your oil to be changed, or you're waiting in the dentist's office, or whatever else. And so it's, it's a great thing. Also, we got this going on over at Station 330, still going on, about another week to go roughly, and that is relief for Central Texas for the flood victims down in Kerr County and all the rest. We have a deal with Station 330. You go there, you buy me or whatnot, and whatever you donate on top of the, you know, the cost of the meal and tip, et cetera, they'll match, $5, $10, whatever else. Jesse over there is doing a really great job. I've been there, a lot of people have been there. It's a great place to go. It's become kind of one of those places you go for special occasions, which I did. I took Robin there on her anniversary. So it's a great place to go, and, and this is a really great benefit going on over there at Station 330. So thank you for that. I believe that's about it. We have a couple of nonprofit things that's coming up this weekend. I'll wait till I get to the end of that. There's, we had a very successful Christmas in July on Saturday. I was talking with some couple of people, and they said, no, they had plenty of people there. So it was a good and fun time, head ball. And just give me a moment here while I share this with all the other spots here. The link was a little slow for me. Sometimes it is like that, but I'm going to share it now. You're watching the magic being done from behind the scenes, all the various groups I share this with. But anyway, let's talk about, we talk about the special sessions. Come on, there you go. We talk about special sessions. Only the governor can call a special session, and only the governor can set the parameters of what they talk about, which is not the way it goes in a regular session. A regular session, the legislative agenda is set by the House Speaker and Lieutenant Governor. And the special sessions, like we have every two years practically, the governor calls it, and only what he puts on that agenda is allowed to be discussed. Now, he could add things as it's proceeding, so it's not like written in stone or anything like that. But if you wanted to get something on the agenda and he didn't approve it, like, for example, casino gambling did not make the cut because he's not in favor of it, or at least he does not in favor of using a special session on it, it cannot be discussed. And I have here in my hot sweaty hands, and believe me, it is hot and sweaty out there, from the governor's page on the legislative, or the governor's, the Texas government website, say it right, dummy, all the various things that they're going to be talking about. And it's a fairly long list, but really it boils down to about three things, maybe four. Okay? Flood relief for Central Texas, which was ostensibly the reason why this whole thing was called. Also THC regulation, which I'll be discussing in just a minute. Also, redistricting of congressional districts. And like I mentioned earlier, it's a, that's a very confusing topic, and I hope I shed some light on it, but I don't, you know, when I try to teach this in class, you know, the kids see the contradictions in law and in court rulings. And so it's, it's kind of a hard topic, but I'll do the best I can. Also, the one last one, I won't be able to talk about it as much as the, hopefully, the end of the STAR tests. That's on the agenda here. But it's a lot of different things. They got other tax relief. They got flood warning systems. They got some incentives for water projects. They also are expanding legislation on protecting women's privacy in sex segregated spaces. In other words, young males and women's sports and things of that nature, which already they have a great deal of legislation about. So we're not going to focus a lot on that. But here we go. Which one do you want to talk about first, Josh?
Oh, boy. Let's start with the flood relief.
The flood relief, okay. Well, there's really kind of straightforward. Here's the thing about the flood relief is that it is supposedly the reason why this whole session was called. But the truth of the matter, the session was called because Donald Trump is putting pressure on state of Texas to redraw the congressional districts. Now, the order in which we address these things makes a difference in the legislature because the Democrats have already said, when the topic of redistricting comes up, they're going to take off and hit the road. You know, they basically need 100 members in the House and 21 members in the Senate to have a quorum to be able to do business. And twice before in this century, in 2003 and in 2021, Democrats left the state to prevent certain political bills going through the legislature. The flood relief was supposed to be on top of the hit parade, you know, the first thing they do. But it's going to be one of the last. Why? Because if the Democrats break and run and go to Oklahoma or New Mexico or wherever they've been in the past to do this, then they won't be available to do anything for flood relief, and it's going to look really, really bad politically. So the Republicans are putting this front and center, this redistricting front and center, and holding the flood relief off till the end to prevent the Democrats from breaking and running. So basically, let's say the bill comes up in the next two, three days, which is expected to be by the end of the week at least, and the Democrats prevent a quorum from forming by, say, going to, you know, Baton Rouge for, for several weeks, they're going to be out voting, they won't be able to vote for the other things on the agenda, some of which they support. And it's going to, so it's a really politically tricky maneuver that they're doing here. But when it comes to flood relief, basically, it's not just the money, it's also going to increase flood warning systems and also, you know, the alert systems that failed during Kerr County. There's, here's the thing about the floods. Everybody, the first thing that people wanted to do when they blame, sign blame for what happened down there last month is, is, well, it was because of budget cuts by Trump or the Weather Service or whatever else. The truth of the matter, there's a lot of failure on the ground as well locally, which is, for us old timers, remember Katrina, you know, Hurricane Katrina came in, blew up New Orleans, everybody blaming Bush until they found out the governor in the state of Louisiana and the mayor of New Orleans completely and totally failed at their job. Well, what's happening here is in Kerr County, that a lot of the systems that were supposed to be in place were inadequate or not in use, and that the warning systems were, were not very effective. But, you know, in our highly politicized nature, if I, you know, stumped my toe, I'm going to have to blame somebody, and therefore it was, it was Trump's fault. Well, I don't know how much that's true, but I do know that there was a great deal of failure at the local level, and there was some failure at the state level. And so there's some similarities between what happened in Kerr County and what happened in Katrina, like I just pointed out. The bottom line is that what the flood relief is going to do is it's going to increase availability of emergency systems, not just, and not just funding and helping people, you know, recover, but there'll be some of that as well. Also, there're going to be some new restrictions about building along some of these rivers. That Guadalupe River has been, this is not the first time it's had a flood by any means. They've had floods there since we've recorded history in Texas. You know, it's very flood prone area, and people still build their homes here. They'll get government flood insurance, which for some people is, you know, some people don't like government subsidized flood insurance because it basically subsidizing you building in these dangerous areas like that. But nevertheless, the system didn't work, and we're going to need to make it work. And that's what they're going to do. Now, there's not much controversy associated with this. This will probably pass pretty easily. The money is there. Texas isn't rolling in money, but it has excess funds. They could put a billion dollars towards this out of their rainy day account, no pun intended. And they'll probably make this problem more manageable in the future. So this is not seen as a high conflict zone. So let's go to, I want to go to THC. You want to go to THC?
Let's do it.
That's right, you know. All right. For those who are uninitiated, THC is, is the active chemical in marijuana, and it's infused in different products, gummies and edibles and sodas, you know, mineral water, whatever. And in the state of Texas, it's not illegal, okay, for that. All right. Dan Patrick has got this on his brain. He wants to ban the whole thing, ban every iota of it. And they, and they passed this law in the regular session to ban THC in the state of Texas. And Abbott vetoed it, much to Patrick's anger. He had a press conference the day after where he blasted Abbott and all this other stuff. This is my personal opinion about Dan Patrick. He's insane. All right. Now, I think he's gotten so power hungry that he thinks he can run the state, and I don't know why he wouldn't think that, actually. The Senate is totally under his control, and he basically has such a thumb on the House because Dan Patrick is the conduit for a lot of different funding sources for campaigns. And if Dan Patrick tells these sources, do not support this person, like he did Dwayne Burns, then you're not going to get any money from Tim Dunn out West Texas, or these other guys that are multimillion billion dollar donors. Dan Patrick controls the spigot of money that these people use for campaigning. And because the state of Texas law on campaign finance is so loose, you know, basically, if I have a million dollars, I want to give it to candidate X, here's the check. There's no restrictions or no workarounds needed like you have at the federal level. Here it is. And Dan Patrick, you know, is probably one of the best financed politicians the state's ever seen, and he has the ability to say, this guy's getting me trouble, cut him off. So Dan Patrick runs the state, period. Now, constitutionally, the lieutenant governor probably is the most powerful legislative agent in our, in our state, but I don't think the writers of the Constitution, the state of Texas envision the kind of money and the kind of power that a lieutenant governor could, could direct. That being said, they brought it up again. They want to ban THC's products. They all, there are, there is competing legislation that would regulate it to some degree. Okay? Now, right now, as far as I know about THC regulations, is that that and other hemp derived products is subject to regulation. One legislation would explicitly make it illegal for somebody to buy it and give it to somebody under the age of 21. Okay? Well, that's pretty much the similar thing to the alcohol restrictions. Some of the people who want to maintain having a market here for THC products, they want to regulate it more like alcohol. So in a sense that, you know, minors can't access it. And if you give it to a minor, it's a, it's a federal or state crime, I guess. And you'd have to be over 21 to buy it yourself. You know, people say, where would you buy this product? Well, a lot of liquor stores have the THC infused sodas and mineral waters, and so it's, it's not hard to find at all. You know, Specs has it, I'm sure. And I don't know Total Wine does, and all, and all these other places. And then you also have the CBD joints. There's a couple of cannabis joints related in this Johnson County area. We all know where they are, if that's your interest. But also, it, they would, basically, according to the agenda, our legislation to comprehensively regulate hemp derived products, including limiting potency, restricting synthetically modified compounds, and establishing enforcement mechanisms, all without banning a lawful agricultural commodity. We do have a lot of hemp growers in this state, and hemp is used for a lot of different purposes, not just for THC. So there you are. My personal opinion about THC is that, you know, for somebody in my generation, you know, us older guys, we always associate with THC with marijuana smoking. This is not, not to me the same thing, in a sense, because THC is used not just to get high. It's really not, I mean, you have to drink a lot of it to get high. Okay? So, you know, does it, so does it happen? Well, is what makes that different than beer, or, you know, in that sense. You drink a lot of beer, you get drunk. You drink a lot of THC, you get stoned. But you drink one can of it at 10 milligrams, which is the maximum, it doesn't have, you're not going to get it high and stoned. You may get relaxed, whatever else, which brings up another point. Why do people use THC products? It isn't for some sort of recreational use, in my opinion, for the most part. Of course, you're going to have people that abuse THC, just like they abuse alcohol, just like they abuse Xanax or Flexatine or Prozac or anything else. But one thing that THC has been shown to do is it does help alleviate PTSD symptoms. It helps alleviate anxiety. It helps alleviate some of the, you know, some of the tensions, you know. It is, is a calming influence on people that are having to deal with stress and trauma and things of that nature. A lot of veterans use THC related products, many by prescription, because it is a way of dealing with trauma and stress from related trauma. Also, it is, it is somewhat of a pain reliever. Now, I'm not going to say I have a headache, I'm going to go out and guzzle down a couple of cans. That's not what I'm saying at all. But those who have chronic pain, THC products of all different kinds is of help. Now, I think a lot of people like Dan Patrick still associate THC with a bunch of hippies getting stoned. Or they see what happened in Oklahoma, which a lot of people regret some of the looseness of their, their industry. A few, three or four years ago, Oklahoma approved medical marijuana, in part because in the, in their legislative hearings, they had numerous veterans say that smoking weed helped them with their stress and pain and things of that nature. And a lot of former athletes said the same thing. And so they approved medical marijuana. And what happened is it became almost ridiculously easy to get a prescription for weed, and dispensaries are popping up all over the place. And, you know, you've got massive numbers of growers and all that. And see, Patrick thinks that's going to happen to Texas. Well, you can regulate it. Oklahoma basically went from zero to 60 on this thing, so to speak, and we can regulate it. But to ban THC products is going to be more harmful than it would be helpful. And what's the alternative? The PTSD victims, the people dealing with stress and dealing with people with pain, aren't going to say, oh, well, I guess I just got to live with my condition. They're going to go to alternative products, some of which are much more dangerous than THC, such as Oxycontin or Vicodin or other types of pharmaceuticals. Or they'll maybe abuse alcohol more, or they may go to the black market and get products that may have dangerous elements in it, like fentanyl. Furthermore, if you ban it, all you're going to do is cause a whole nother generation of bootleggers. You know, it's really interesting. That's kind of an off topic, but you know, back when I was a young kid, you couldn't get Coors beer in Texas. And there was a thriving market of people who would drive to Hobbs, New Mexico and get Coors beer and bring it back into Texas. When I was in Waco, you couldn't get Bush beer in Texas. And so the smart guys thinking they're bad and all that would go to Texar Can and get Bush beer and bring it back for their parties. Or they'd go to New Mexico and bring back Olympia beer, because those weren't sold in Texas. And so it's kind of like a, you know, aren't we cool kind of thing. Well, this is what's going to happen with THC products. You're going to do a thriving market in THC products coming in from Oklahoma. So my, my point is Dan Patrick is dead wrong on this, that his banning of it is going to cause much more problems. It's going to cause problems not just in the people who need it, but also with another enforcement mechanism on our police and state highway patrol. It's going to be unenforceable, and you're going, they're going to go to dangerous side options. And even if those side options like alcohol are readily available, you're going to see people abusing alcohol or pain killing drugs because of lack of availability of THC. Now, some of y'all, and I get it, my generation, you know, we were taught, stay away from weed. But we're not talking about sitting around smoking joints all day long or hitting the bong. I don't even know if they use bongs anymore. I'm so out of touch. This is, people don't believe me sometimes, but I've never smoked marijuana in my life. I'd never experimented with it. I never even, I never was tempted by it. And the people I was with really weren't involved in that, so I didn't have it, you know, thrown in my face very much. But on this, on this topic, I've come around on THC infused products because the alternatives of drugs and alcohol, even if they're legal drugs, prescription drugs, to me is a much worse alternative. And that's my view on THC. I hope, you know, if you did feel differently, then, then I'd like to hear from you. The other one here, I'm going to just kind of hit briefly, a ban on taxpayer funded lobbying. I texted my friend Victoria from the city council and asked, does the city of Burleson pay a lobbying group to present our information and views down in Austin? Absolutely, we do. Most communities do. This would ban that practice altogether, having the city or the school districts being able to have taxpayer funded lobbying efforts, you know, contract with a lobbying firm down in Austin. And almost all cities of any size have that because they, you know, our city doesn't have a full-time government operative that works and lives down in Austin. What we have is the mayor and Victoria and Adam Russell and Larry Scott and others going down there to represent us when they can. But they, you know, you know, I'm going to have the mayor on a week from tomorrow. You know, he went to Austin two, three times, but you know, believe it or not, he actually has other parts of his life, you know, grandfather, husband, et cetera. He doesn't have, he doesn't have the ability to go and spend 140 days in Austin continually pressing our, our positions. They do what they can. So we pay somebody to have representation. As far as the school district, I have, I do not know, because I don't have, this came up last night, and I didn't have a contact to immediately go to to ask about it. I don't know if BSD does, but I do know that BSD is part of a larger group of lobbying organizations. You'll be a participant in one. And this would ban that. And, you know, and the people that want to ban that say, well, it's a waste of taxpayers' money for them to go and, and maybe lobby for things that the taxpayers may not be in favor of. Is this a violation of the First Amendment? They'll tell you no, and I believe that to be true. I don't think it's a violation of the First Amendment, so it's not a constitutional issue. Why? Because it doesn't mean the city of Burleson can't go down there and lobby. They just can't pay or have somebody to do it. Now, I didn't ask how much it costs to do this on behalf of the city of Burleson. Anybody who wants to know can find out, and because our, our books are transparent in this city. And if you want to know how much we spent on a lobbying group, it's right there online. So there you go. It's not worth my time to go look it up for you because, you know, you can find it if you want. I don't have a problem with this. The cities need representation, you know, particularly when they want to redo property taxes, for example. That's a big issue, and we need to have them know what it's going to do to us. Now, will the city be able to do it? Still go down it? Sure, on our own time. Or you could have a private citizen pay for lobbying groups. But the city of Burleson and BSD wouldn't be able to pay for it, and they need representation down there. My goodness, doesn't the schools do, do it? And here's another thing, this is a side note. I'm going to, this is, boy, you're going to be entitled to an opinion on this one. Ken Paxton is a terrible, terrible person, and yet he is the one that's going to be in charge of making sure BSD has Ten Commandments posted in its room. And if it's up to him, he wants it in every classroom, not just in the hallway. It's incredibly ironic that the man that's been in charge, is going to be put in charge of enforcing the Ten Commandments, basically he's ignored number six, according to his now soon to be ex-wife. I just find that incredible. Josh is over there nodding his head, too. But, but it's ridiculous, you know, to have, you know, Ken Paxton's going to enforce the Ten Commandments, but he doesn't live by them? And so it just, it's a terrible thing. And that, and I've asked the schools to come on the show and talk about school related things, and they're afraid to do it. Why? Because when, during the session, when several school districts started speaking out against vouchers, Dan Patrick's put the Texas Attorney General's Office into action, and they had him investigated for violation possibly of misuse of funds and things of that nature. So any school district, there was a two or three mid-city districts that started raising their voice against vouchers, and they got inspectors from the Attorney General's Office looking into whether or not they were violating any kind of finance laws or anything else like that. Basically, it was just a shakedown, to scare them off. And so, you know, a lot of the school districts are very, very reluctant to speak out against the state of Texas because they are afraid that Ken Paxton is going to use his office to prosecute, you know, violators as he sees them. Okay? That's why I have such a poor opinion of Mr. Paxton in so many ways. And so there you go. Now, the big, the big one is redistricting. And I'm going to try to explain it without trying to confuse myself primarily. The courts ruled 60, 65 years ago that you can't create districts that create unfair disadvantages to groups of voters. What used to happen in Texas up until about 62 is you'd have one giant district in Houston, like over a million people, and they'd have a lot smaller ones around in the suburbs. And so basically, the proportionality was way out of whack. And so the courts ruled that your districts had to be roughly the same And so the courts ruled that your districts had to be roughly the same population level, which is around 880,000 people as of the last census. The Voting Rights Act also said it'd be, it came in 65, said you cannot use districts drawing to discriminate against minority populations. Okay? We were taught that in school. And then in 1990, another Voting Rights Act came out, and it basically said it is allowable to create districts that have a majority of minority voters, to create districts that were with a high likelihood of electing minority representation. And that is exactly what happened, is that you had districts now being drawn that would intentionally create large numbers of black and Hispanic voters, so to increase the likelihood of having a black or Hispanic representative. And you increased the number of minorities in the US Congress, and it worked. Who benefited from this? It was the Republicans, without question benefited from this. Because basically, what it did was it allowed the states to put a lot of black voters, which is almost uniformly, at this time, Democrat, it's, things are changing a little bit there, and the Latino vote, which in many states is almost uniformly Democrat. You could put them in one district and leave the rest majority white, and therefore Republican, and therefore the Republicans cleaned up in the next rounds of, like in early 2000s elections. There's one, in 2003, when we redrew the districts in this state, six Democrats are targeted, including a gentleman who represented Burleson, Chet Edwards. And he was the only one that survived the 2004 election. And then later, redistricting caught off with him eventually in 2010. But the point I'm making is that law allowed the states draw districts with intentionality of creating districts with high minority populations, a majority, so they'd have more minority representatives. But again, it did cost the Democratic Party, it was one of those unintended effects. They thought they'd benefit from it, and they, boy, it cost them in the South. That's why almost all of the Southern Democrats, which is becoming more and more rare, either represent urban areas like Austin or minority themselves. Okay? All right, hang on, I need my coffee for this one. Thank you, Jonathan, for the coffee. Anyway, back to the matter. Well, in the last few sessions of the Supreme Court, they have moved away from that strict interpretation about drawing the districts with minority populations. And they have tried over, you know, over the last few sessions to de-emphasize the use of race in drawing congressional districts. Here comes the Trump administration. They, in their new interpretation of what they think the court is saying, the court hasn't said it directly yet, but this is, they're kind of mind-reading what's, and seeing what's coming in the future, they think. And they reinterpreted that law in 1990 to say that any district that uses race with that kind of intentionality is unconstitutional. So Mr. Trump, through his DOJ, is pressuring Texas to redraw the districts. Now, normally, this takes place once a decade after the census. Can they do it now? Yes, there is no law preventing that. The Constitution allows for the states to handle this, as long as they don't use discriminatory practices, et cetera, et cetera. So what they're doing is not illegal nor unconstitutional. It's extremely unusual. The last time we had a redistricting situation that didn't occur in the year after, the session after the census, was 2003, when the courts ruled in favor of the Republicans and they could redraw the districts, and there you go. Well, so what's happening is Abbott and Patrick are taking this and saying, well, the Trump administration says we can redraw districts and, you know, try to de-emphasize the use of race. And therefore, they think because of that, they could shave off a few people here, and a few people there, and a few people there, and recreate districts that would increase the likelihood, they say, up to five new Republican-leaning seats. So basically, you'd have five new possible pickups in the 2026 election for the Republican Party, which, if you've been paying any attention to the US Congress, you know, it's only about a three-vote difference. If four seats flip to the Democrats, they'll run the House. And so they think, well, it's likely we're going to lose a handful of seats, so let's redraw the districts and see if we can pick up some seats elsewhere. And that's, that's the whole impetus behind this, is the Trump administration. There was not a real pressing need to redraw the districts. Now, as odd as it may sound, not every Texas Republican's really excited about this, because the districts are going to be redrawn, that may increase Republican possibilities, and other districts may decrease their own possibilities to some degree. Most of the Texas Republicans are going to be reelected as they want it. They're going to be very safe. Okay? But if you're under 60%, you don't want to risk going down to under 55%. And so not everybody on the Texas House delegations was excited about this. Now, where are they looking at drawing these new seats? Primarily South Texas. There's two Democrats that represent South Texas and outskirts of San Antonio. One named Henry Cuellar, who actually is the last pro-life Democrat in the House, but he also is under investigation for financial shenanigans about campaigns, so we'll see. Ah, look at this, he pops it right up.
Got a little something for you.
Yeah, there you go.
In my furious amounts of research, I do believe that this is the current.
The current map is correct.
Map?
Oh, you're so good. That's why he gets the big money.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I don't, I haven't seen an official plan for the new.
No, because there's not one.
There's not one?
No, that's the point I'm going to go to, is that there's not one. And so they're having a hearing tonight, but there's no map that it's been submitted yet, so I can't see how it's going to draw. And we're not talking about dramatically redrawing it. I doubt District 25 here in Burleson is going to be affected hardly at all. You might see some on the edges, but that's about it. We're not going to, Roger Williams doesn't have anything to worry about, because his District 25, which is, you know, not just us, but Hood County, Somerville, Parker County, they're good to go. But the districts I'm talking about are down near the bottom, 23 and 15, and then 34. Now, let me get closer, because my eyes aren't as good as you do. Not 23, that's 28, sorry, 23 is fairly safe. 28 is represented by Democrats, so is 15. 34 is represented barely, though, by Republicans, so they want to kind of, you know, shift some votes around and make those two Democrat seats, 28 and 15, more Republican-oriented, whatever else. And they may shave a few Republican voters out of 20, 21 and 23. But the point I'm making is that, that that's the main targets. Now, as far as any targets around here, the only one in the DFW area that I really think is going to be targeted is Mark VC up in East Fort Worth, District 33, which is pretty close to us, actually. I mean, if I go another five miles north-east, I'm in District 33, and it's a really, really bizarrely drawn district that encompasses East Fort Worth, and it has like this, you know, very narrow band that goes through Irving, and then it represents West Dallas. And it's, it's, you know, it's, it's an example of what this law does, because they drew that particular District 33 just to make sure a black representative or an Hispanic representative would come from it. And it does. Mark VC's represented it ever since it was drawn in 2010. Now, there's a couple of other seats down in the Houston area, I don't know much about that, but I'm just saying, the bottom line is this. The Trump administration's pressuring Texas to do this, and you don't need to pressure Dan Patrick too hard for this, he's been trying to do this for a while anyway. And will it go through? The answer is eventually it will. Because first of all, there'll be lawsuits, and there'll be, there'll be all this other stuff, and it'll go to the state Supreme Court. Will it go to the US Supreme Court? Unlikely. You know what? You know, a lot of people don't know this, I guess, but about six years ago, the Supreme Court said, we've had enough of these redistricting cases. There was one, it was a Wisconsin case called Ruko versus Common Cause, there, that's some free education for you, and the Supreme Court said, enough, we're not going to rule on these anymore. This is a state issue, and you're going to have to deal with it. So there'll be, there'll be lawsuits that would, you know, be challenging these new maps. And it'll go to Texas court. Man, they'll probably get a sympathetic hearing from an Austin judge, and then it'll be sent to the appeals level, which is going to be probably, may even be sympathetic, and then it's going to be sent to the Texas Supreme Court, which is nine Republican votes. And I just, it's going to happen. Now, what about the use of quorum? Again, to kind of put that in perspective, what would have to happen to prevent this from coming to vote is the Democrats would have to take off and leave the state. It isn't like they just stay home. The Lieutenant Governor and the Speaker of the House, by constitutional edict, have the ability to send the Texas Rangers out to go and literally force you back into Austin. And you hear these old stories about, you know, the Texas Rangers are dragging people out of their house from under their bed or whatever else to get them to Austin, and then you literally can bring them to Austin, handcuff them to their desk, and stand behind them, and then keep them in some sort of detention when the session's over, for the day, you know what I mean? So yeah, that's why they leave the state. It isn't like they just say, I'm not coming to Austin. If they hang around Dallas or whatever, Texas Rangers come get them and drag them down. So in 2003, what happened was, when this, over the same topic, enough Democrats left the state, went to Ardmore, Oklahoma, which, if you've ever been to Ardmore, Josh, you ever been to Ardmore?
I think in passing, yeah.
Yeah, it's a party town, let me tell you.
Oh, yeah.
It's like, I don't know, I think they call Ardmore the Waukesha Hatchie of Oklahoma. I don't know, it's pretty, not much going on. But what was happening, as long as they were staying there, members were missing weddings and funerals and graduations and parties and birthday parties and stuff like that. And so eventually enough came back, and they had a quorum, bang, it passes. This time, the Democrat Senate, they took off, the senators took off, and then went to Santa Fe, which is a lot nicer, Santa Fe, New Mexico. But they just needed one Democrat to break ranks to get a quorum, and this one guy, who's now the mayor of Houston, by the way, Whitmire, his mom was, you know, in a hospice dying, and so he made a deal with Republicans, let me go home and take care of my mother, and I'll promise I'll come. She passes, he's there for it, he's there for the funeral, and then he went to Austin, and they passed the bill. And that was the seats or the lines we used throughout 2003 through 10, or 11, I guess, to be precise. If the Democrats do that again, all Abbott has to do is call another 30-day special session. And he, that's what happened with Rick Perry, and he was going, he did it then. He can call these special sessions till doomsday. Okay? And the last day that they can meet is December 31st. So basically, you're going to put a lot of these Democrats in a situation, they're going to have to spend half a year outside of the state, and that's just not going to happen. You know, you're going to have too many Democrats that are thinking, well, we'll just stay outside the state for six months. No, you won't, because a lot of these people have real jobs, you know. Our legislature is not a professional legislature. A lot of these, the members are, you know, landpeople or lawyers or attorneys or same thing, or, you know, insurance guys, or, you know, on and on and on and on. They don't make a living doing this. And so they're not going to spend six months out of their profession for basically this. Now, this happened again in 2021, where the Democrats went to DC and caught COVID. Good grief, they were doing the same thing then, but they eventually had to come back. Now, the side effect of that is it put Jasmine Crockett in position to win her congressional seat, and I am not a fan of Jasmine Crockett by any means. She represents a DBU area, and she couldn't get two wits about DBU, I can tell you that right now. But I'm not a fan of Jasmine Crockett at all. She thinks, but she gonna, you know, she's an upper-middle-class young woman from a high finance family in St. Louis, went to private schools all her life, and now she wants to come and act like she's just jazz from the hood and drop a few F-bombs around to show her street cred. She's a phony. So there you go, that's a side issue there. But back to the matter at hand, about to finish up redistricting. It will happen. And because the challenges are going to have to come from outside the government, in other words, it's not going to be the Trump administration or the Abbott administration that will be challenging these maps, and it's going to have to be outside forces, they're going to lose those challenges. And so we're going to have new districts drawn for the next election, next year for November. Now, again, we probably won't notice it hardly at all here in District 25. I doubt Roger Williams will lose more than 10% of his territory at most. The areas that are probably the most affected will be the San Antonio and South regions and a couple of DFW districts, like in the mid-cities. So there you are. Is there any other thing on the list? There's some smaller items, if you will, but, you know, eliminating the STAR test is still being discussed. I'd be on board with that. And now, before we get too excited about the STAR test being eliminated, there will be some sort of statewide testing of students. But just the STAR test and its predecessor, the tax test, were so time-consuming and expensive and demanding and stressful that they really didn't achieve the purpose. I mean, if you ever were part of that as a parent or a teacher, you just know how much time was wasted on tax remediation and teaching to the test and stifling creativity and, you know, you couldn't just do some interesting things in class, because in two weeks, we got a tax test with all these high stakes involved, and on and on and on. So, you know, I hope they do something different today, eliminate, it's not just the cost of it, but also the time consumption of it. It just, it's ridiculous. See, there's any others that catch my eye before? Not really of real, real significant nature, at least not until it becomes an issue. So let me just sum this up. This special session probably is not going to be the last one, because I doubt the redistricting will be passed on the first swing of the pitch, but it eventually will be passed. And the longer the Democrats hold out on it, the less time they'll have to fight it in courts. And that may be what they're going to end up doing, because again, a quorum will not work in the long run, again, because these members of their participating in this quorum, I don't know what's a good word for it, the absconding to Oklahoma, whatever they want to call it, they're going to be missing out professionally and personally to such a degree that they're not going to do it for long. So it may not pass this session, but I bet it passes the next session. The Democrats may just say, okay, we're going to fight you in court. And I don't see really that coming to a positive conclusion for them as well. Is this right or wrong about redistricting? My wife is talking about this, she has an opinion on it. My, not to be too callous about it, but it really, this has been going on since the founding of a republic. Gerrymandering is an old term that comes from the early 1800s. They were doing this the first time they drew districts. They were doing this in the new state of Virginia before there was a constitution that was approved. And this is something that's done all over the country. What the Democrats want, like Illinois and Maryland and California to do is do the same thing Texas is. Well, they can't in Maryland and Illinois. Why? Because they're so, they're gerrymandered to such a degree that there's nothing left to gerrymander. The worst gerrymandered state in the Union is Maryland. Illinois is right behind it. And what I mean is, is that there's just no more Republicans in those states for them to divvy up. And there's no more districts for them to draw that would be any more or less Democrat. California, they have an independent, supposedly, agency that does this. It's selected by the government, but it's supposed to be independent. And they want Newsom to overrun, rule them, but they'd have to change the Constitution to do that in the state of California. And so it's very difficult for them to do it. Can they change the Constitution? Sure. They could hold a special session of their Congress, or if they're still in session, I don't know how they work, they could have a special election in November, and on and on and on. But the point is, is that that's a lot of work and not a lot of gain. And so the Democrat states don't really have this kind of option that the Republicans have with Texas, because the Democrat states have already kind of squeezed all the juice out of the lemon, so to speak. There's nothing left. Is it right or wrong? If you want to attach right or wrong in a political context, it's a waste of time, because it is what it is. This, the drawing of these maps by both parties has been done this way for 200-plus years. And when your party is doing it, it's good. When the other party is doing it, it's bad. Is it fair? Well, as my dear old father would say, there's only one fair, and it comes in October. And so, you like that one?
Oh, I've heard my dad say that before several times.
Yeah, there is no fair, except in October, and that's it. So we, you know, people that are upset by this, I get it. I know, I know I'd be upset if my party was being the one that's going to be squeezed. But it's going to happen, and the rightness or the wrongness of it is just not really something that's going to enter into the conversation, at least at the political level. I'll just say this about my personal relationship with the Republican Party, it's almost non-existent now. I still consider myself conservative, I still consider myself, you know, pretty constitutional, blah, blah, blah. But with men like Dan Patrick, Ken Paxton, and I'm not a big fan of Abbott either, I can't, I can't support that. You know, give me something to support Republican Party, give me people I can support. Give me people of goodwill and that will want to govern this state appropriately and not for such harsh, harsh partisan advantages. not for such harsh, harsh partisan advantages. So, you know, my relationship with the Republican Party has been dead for a while. And I'm like so many of you out there, I can't tell you how many people told me this. They feel like they don't have a political party anymore. Even my Democrats feel that way. They think, a lot of the Democratic friends I have think their party's gone so far to the left, they don't even recognize it. Well, that's, and my Republican friends, many of them say the same thing, that the Republicans have gone so far into, to the right and are so under control by big money that they don't recognize it either. And so I, I am like so many of y'all are without a party. My, my personal positions on many things haven't changed, but I don't have a party that represents that. And for my Democrat friends, I think most of y'all think the same thing. And it's, that's a terrible, terrible place for us to be in right now. But that'll have to be a discussion for another day. Tomorrow, I have a much more pleasant conversation coming. Meghan Swerengen and her husband Chad are starting a church here in Burleson. And we're going to talk about Bold City Church tomorrow. On the fourth, I tentatively have a guest, but until that is put down, I will wait till announced that, but it's a, it's a guest you've been seeing many times. And then on Tuesday next week, I want to talk to Mayor Fletcher and we're going to talk about some of these things here. If you think this is useful information, share it with your friends. I hope you do. I need the numbers, right? I got to keep Josh in, in the lifestyle he's accustomed to.
A paycheck would be nice.
Every now, yeah, okay. I'll slide you a few bucks or whatever.
Hey, appreciate it.
All right. So y'all take care, stay cool as best you can. I'll see y'all tomorrow.